City Clerk, would you call the roll? Alderman Jean Baptiste is on his way.
Alderman Fisk.
Here.
Alderman Wynn.
Here.
Alderman Wilson.
Here.
Alderman Holmes.
Here.
Alderman Tendem.
Here.
Alderman Grover.
Here.
Alderman Rainey.
Here.
Alderman Burris.
Here.
We have a quorum. I'd like to welcome everybody to the Monday, October 26th, meeting of the Evanston City Council. The first item is the Mayor's public announcements. I'd like to thank Senator Dick Durbin, Senator Roland Burris, and Congresswoman Jan Schakowsky, who were incredibly helpful when the city manager and I were in Washington last week, and who are doing everything that they can to support our application to HUD for $40 million to buy foreclosed vacant boarded-up properties and rehab them for affordable housing. The other group that was very helpful was the Environmental Protection Agency. I told them that we had some concerns about LEED certification, and they said absolutely LEED is the way to go. That's the best minds that Barack Obama could bring together on the issue. And they also were very encouraging that for job training, green jobs are the wave of the future, and that there were a large number -- and I'm going to wait for this for Lionel to walk in, which he's about to do because he wants to hear this. Oh, he's going in. Oh, he's going in the Aldermanic Library. Lionel loses. But jobs for ex-offenders are available. The EPA has had a lot of success with brownfield money and training ex-offenders and getting them hired. Their success rate is fabulous. So, green jobs are, according to the EPA, the way to go. City Manager, do you have any announcements?
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the council, good evening. We have several announcements. First, I'd like -- I don't see if Evanda Thomas, our Director of Health and Human Services, is in the room. We'll get her.
She's coming.
She's coming. Everyone knows that the City of Evanston's Department of Health and Human Services has been working diligently to protect the community with the provision of the H1N1 vaccine. Unfortunately, we have yet to receive any of those vaccines. I've asked Ms. Thomas to come this evening to provide the city council and the community an update as to where we stand with procuring those vaccines and our current schedule for clinics.
Sure. Thank you, City Manager. Good evening, City Council. I am Evanda Thomas, Director of Evanston's Health and Human Services Department, and I'd like to provide you with an update regarding our current H1N1 influenza activity and our vaccination situation. In the last week, influenza activity has increased dramatically on the national, state, and local level. In Cook County, this increase has been evidenced by increased ER visits, increased hospitalizations, and increased doctors' visits and school absenteeism. Vaccination is considered the primary medium for controlling the spread of H1 influenza. As a result, the federal government expected to provide adequate vaccine supplies to cover the target groups and eventually everyone in the community. Their communications indicated that our first large shipments would be available at the local level mid-October. As a result, local health departments plan their H1N1 vaccination clinics accordingly. However, due to manufacturing issues, vaccination clinics and the shipment have been delayed. Currently, Evanston Health and Human Services Department has not received a vaccine. As you know, Evanston Health and Human Services Department has scheduled H1 flu vaccination clinics in our School District 65, 202, Northwestern University, some self-selected private schools in Evanston for our high priority groups. We will also offer weekend clinics on both Sunday and Saturday for Evanston residents that meet the target group profile, and our plan is to start November 7th, 2009. The school-based clinics have been scheduled to open on Monday, November 2nd, 2009, again pending vaccine availability. We were notified today at 4:00 PM that Evanston Health and Human Services Department is scheduled to receive vaccine by end of week. We're doing everything possible that we can to speed up distribution process and are in constant communication with the Illinois Department of Public Health. We will post the new clinic schedules on our website, and we ask for your assistance as the community of getting the word out. As much frustration as the present situation has caused, please keep in mind that our vaccination campaign was planned for the long term and will be supported by a large number of providers in the community, both public and private. In addition to vaccine, there are other methods that can be employed to check the spread of this disease. We recommend the following effective control measures, such as recognizing early symptoms, staying home when sick, following proper cough etiquette, washing your hands, and using good health habits. We appreciate your understanding during this challenging pandemic year. We will continue to communicate with you routinely. If you have any questions, please call our flu hotline, which is 847-866-2948, or 847-866-2962. Again, 847-866-2948, or 847-866-2962. Updates will be daily on our website regarding vaccine availability and vaccine clinic schedules at www.cityofevanston.org. If you have any questions or concerns, please contact us via the web or at our numbers, and again, we will be diligent to keep you informed. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Madam Mayor, if I could just ask one question of Ms. Thomas.
Yes.
There's also been a concern about the seasonal flu vaccine. Can you maybe give an update on the best place to get the seasonal flu vaccine and any other information you may have?
Sure. Currently, we have the seasonal flu vaccine schedule posted on our website, but your local pharmacists do have seasonal flu. Private providers do have seasonal flu. We at the Health Department are not offering seasonal flu. We're offering the H1N1 vaccine only. But if you have questions regarding locations for Evanston community residents, you can call our number at 847-866-2962, or visit our website. We do have those links available, and they're updated daily. We are encouraging all to get their vaccine. Do not wait until we receive supply. If private providers get them in Evanston at the same time that we will. If residents have another means of ascertaining the vaccine, we would encourage you to get it as soon as possible. But again, we will update you regularly regarding the availability that we have as a department, and we will implement our clinics expeditiously. Thank you.
Next, Madam Mayor, members of the council, we have two awards, and would like to ask Mayor Tisdale to join representatives from our Public Works Department and also representative from the Illinois section of the American Society of Civil Engineers for a presentation.
Good evening, City Council. My name is Bob Gorski. I am the past president of the American Society of Civil Engineers, and we represent about 3,000 civil engineers in northern Illinois. Each year, we recognize projects of significance. In particular, this year, and each year, we give out an outstanding civil engineering achievement award for projects over $5 million. Just a few weeks ago, at our 93rd Annual Dinner, the society presented an award to the City of Evanston for the Combined Sewer Relief Program. So I'm here tonight to present that award, this plaque, to Mayor Tisdale.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Let's be clear, Dave really wins this award. Congratulations.
Thank you. Mr. Stonebeck, can you maybe just say a brief word about the project?
Thank you, and thank you to the ASC for this award. Some of you may know that the combined sewer system in Evanston has been a problem. We have a report that goes back to 1938, indicating how undersized the combined sewer was for the development that occurred in the 1930s. In 1987, the City of Evanston began searching for a solution to this problem, and we began looking for engineering firms. And what really motivated the community to move forward with this project was a major rainstorm that occurred in August in 1989. It was a 100-year rain event, and the amount of damage that was caused by that rainstorm was significant. Everything that was in anybody's basement was out along the curb after that rain event because it was all damaged. Many basements had five to six feet of water, sewage water, in their basements. The city selected to hire Hires Engineering, now MWH Americas, based on their innovative design, which included partial separation and overland flow. The partial separation was the installation of large diameter tunnels and sewer mains by open-cut construction, and the overland flow was accomplished by putting restrictors and drainage structures that kept stormwater up on the street level and allowed the stormwater to flow along the curb for up to two blocks where it would be intercepted by the relief sewer project. The project cost the City of Evanston approximately $210 million. The first pipe went in the ground in 1990, and the last pipe went in the ground in 2008. So it was quite a long project. But the proof is in the pudding in that we had another 100-year rain event on September 13th, 2008, and there was very minimal damage and very few basements that had any sewage backups into their basements. So although it was very expensive, very long duration, the project did work to what it was supposed to do. And overall, the project was feasible because of the Metropolitan Water Reclamation District constructing their deep tunnel and tar project. We funded most of the project through IEPA loans, revolving loan funds, which kept the debt payment very low. The city staff was guided by the Flood and Pollution Control Commission, and overall, the project only got done because we had the support of the city council in keeping moving forward and doing the job. So thank you to all of you.
Thank you, Mr. Stonebeck.
Our next recognition this evening is on behalf of the Illinois chapter of the Associated Public Safety Communications Officials, and to tell you a little bit about that is our Fire Chief Alan Burkowski.
Good evening. Chief Eddington and I are proud to be here tonight to recognize one of our telecommunicators from the 911 Center. The Evanston Fire -- the 911 Center is a combined dispatch center for both the police and fire departments. Much like the work of a police officer or firefighter, the 911 telecommunicator needs to go from zero to 100 in the blink of an eye when dealing with emergency events. They have to deal with the frantic phone call, keeping track of police and fire units, while trying to anticipate the needs to help mitigate the emergency. Tonight, we'd like to recognize one of our telecommunicators. Her name was submitted to the Illinois chapter of APOC, which is the Associated Public Safety Communications Officials, for recognition for the work she has done. Last week, she was named Telecommunicator of the Year in the State of Illinois. Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to call up our Telecommunicator of the Year, Lynn Fishman, and her immediate supervisor, Kurt Kumpel.
I'm very proud to be here and be able to tell you a little bit about the nomination that was presented to the APOC board. And if I could begin by -- I'll go backwards with the chain of events, but Lynn has had a very productive, progressive past work period here in the last 12, 15 months. Just to tell you a little bit of history in the communications center, every -- any given night, you have three to four communicators in the 911 Center answering calls. And between the police and fire, we have over 50,000 calls for service annually. And so these dispatchers, communicators, they rotate positions in the center. On one given day, they might be the fire dispatcher; on another given day, the police dispatcher; on another given day, the call taker. And this keeps them fresh and able to handle any type of situation that comes along. So Lynn was nominated for the following three reasons. And one given day in the summer this past summer, there was a water rescue in which she was the call taker position, and she received a telephone call on the cellular line from a lady that was in a boat two and a half miles out in the lake. And this lady was distraught because three other people that were in her boat had jumped in the water without life jackets on in Lake Michigan, and it happened to be a day where the -- was getting very rough. And it got so rough that they were no longer being able to be seen by the lady in the boat, so she called 911, and she asked for a rescue. Well, this put into a chain of events that was just really unusual. We had the Recreation Department respond immediately with their boat. We had the Coast Guard called, and we had the fire department helicopter from Chicago readyed, and we had -- the fire department was down at the waterfront with their jet skis. And all this time that was going on, Lynn was on the phone with the caller, who was hysterical and really didn't know their location. And through terrific interviewing skills and calming techniques, Lynn was able to establish a location and send the rescuers to the right spot in enough time. And this is one of those, after revisiting and listening to it, I really thought we were going to lose these people in the water. But due to the quickness and the response of all people involved and the teamwork of all the telecommunicators in the center, it just happened that Lynn was on the phone and had the job of handling the caller that worked so well and made it go so smoothly. And I'm happy to say that all came back without any injury or fatality. So that was the first thing, most recently, that happened. The next one in order was, we had a lady, a mother, who had approached an officer and said, "I have an adult son who's distraught at home, and I'd like police to go to the house and see if we can help him." Well, Lynn got the phone call from the officer who was approached by the mother and said that her son, her adult son, was home and distraught and needed a reason for police to come by and check on him. So the mother accompanied the officers back to the location, but not after having first been -- being interviewed by Lynn, and Lynn organized the response. One of the things her to remember, that a telecommunicator is taught, that every response could be a major one, regardless of how minor it might start out. Well, in this particular case, she did as protocol required and lined up enough resources so that when the officers went to the scene and confronted the individual that was distraught, it turned out that he was in close possession of a handgun. One for the handgun, one approached by the officers, and a shooting resulted, and also one of the officers getting hit. The whole event occurred rapidly, but most importantly, Lynn maintained control on the radio, kept the radio to the point where there was no traffic so that we could make sure that if there was any emergency traffic, as there was for medical services, that we could get it there rapidly. And I'm happy to report that nobody died at the scene, and because of the safety initiated, that was in large part due to why it went so well. And the third thing that she was nominated for in this same award was, we had an incident where there was a gentleman that was doing a roofing job in north Evanston, and he was on the roof, and something happened, and he fell off the roof, and it was a multi-stage, a multi-level building. And when he fell off, he hit the ground, and he severely injured himself, breaking bones to the point where he couldn't walk or get up. So there he was, laying on the ground. He picks up his cellphone, he dials 911, and who does he get? He gets Lynn. Again, it was her position to be in that spot, to be call taker. In getting Lynn, Lynn begins interviewing him and asking him where he's at so we could send proper EMS response, and he says to Lynn, "I don't know where I'm at. I know the street I'm on, but I don't know an address." So Lynn begins a response of both police and fire, and sends them to the street that he's on, and spreads out the response units, and then asks each individual, police car, fire truck, to use their audible sirens intermittently on the command of Lynn, and through that, the gentleman who was lying on the ground was able to say, "I hear the siren, I don't hear the siren." So we were able to zero in and get this gentleman before he was ready to pass out, I'm sure, from his severe internal injuries. So these were the three events that she was nominated for and why she was chosen as Telecommunicator of the Year. And I must say, it's a most prestigious award for us here in Evanston to have such a good employee. And she's almost 20 years. A few more months, and she's 20 years, and she's trained. Most of the staff in the center, about 75% of the staff, have been trained by Lynn, and she's just one heck of a dedicated person for Evanston, so.
Usually, they warn me when I have to do any public speaking, and it's usually behind closed doors, so I don't have to face everybody. But I just want to thank the City of Evanston, my teammates, all my coworkers. I'm honored. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, we're going to hear in a minute again from the Police Department, but before we do, another plug for our budget workshops that are coming up. We have flyers available. We have created a website, which is www.cityofevanston.org/budget. Just to review, we have our first community budget workshop on Saturday, November 7th, from 8:30 to 1:00 at the Levy Center. This is the sort of the prerequisite class for these budget workshops, so we ask that those who wish to participate through the process attend this first workshop on November 7th. Then there are three additional workshops. On Thursday, November 12, from 7:00 to 10:00 PM at the Robert Crown Center. Tuesday, November 17, from 7:00 to 10:00 PM at the Fleetwood Jordane Center. And Monday, November 30, here in the city council chambers here at the Morton Civic Center, from 7:00 to 10:00 PM. So again, if you're interested in participating, we encourage people to go to the website, cityofevanston.org/budget, for additional information and to sign up for participating in the workshops. Next, several of the aldermen have asked for an update regarding the use of technology by the Police Department, and so Chief Eddington is here to make that presentation. But before he starts, I'd like to ask Chief Eddington to talk briefly about our activities this coming Saturday evening, Halloween, a lot going on here in the City of Evanston. And Chief Eddington, if you could talk a little bit about what we're doing to make sure that everybody has a fun and safe time on Halloween.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. First of all, let me divide the Halloween section of these comments into two parts. We're going to do what we always do on Halloween, which is a substantial effort with the neighborhood watch groups and the block clubs to maintain order and minimize criminal damage to property in the area. We've worked very hard on this system for many years. We have an excellent rapport with many of the neighborhood watch groups, and will be out again, as always, to reduce the egg-throwing and other vandalism. In addition to that, Northwestern has a home game this weekend, which is an afternoon start time. The city, especially the public library, NU, Harris Bank, have worked together with these Seventh Ward Aldermen, Jane Grover, to book together a nice Halloween party to keep the young trick-or-treaters off the street and out of the way of this rather intense traffic time. It will be, we anticipate, a well-attended football game. They're playing Penn State. Joe Paterno is at 390 wins, so we don't have to worry about an excess crowd for the 400th win, but we did research that. Also, NU will be having fireworks after the game, which will hold the crowd for a period of time, and our traffic unit and other members of the department assigned to the traffic control detail will focus on that traffic safety, getting the kids safely in and out of the party, and getting folks on their way after the game and after the fireworks. So we're looking forward to a busy, but fun and safe evening. Thank you, Mr. Manager. Now, on to the prepared remarks. I'd like to, first of all, introduce Detective Brian Bartsch from the Net Unit is with me here this evening, who has all the technical expertise. I'm just supposed to talk about what we do and how we use it. With that, we're going to show a series of videos, and if you go ahead and start, Brian. We've become more sophisticated as time has gone by with the use of this technology. And our technology funding comes from many sources, not only the City of Evanston, Homeland Security, federal grants, the bulk of those grants sponsored by Representative Jan Schakowsky, TIP funding, especially along Howard Street. So there's a myriad of things. You're about to see probably the most expensive Five Seconds in EPD history. And this is a classic example of, "Did anyone see you break it?" It was from that video, we were able to identify that young man and resolve that case, which resulted in a substantial amount of property damage. We have a significant number of cameras in the city. About 77 are located in the police station, and we have several others throughout the city that we'll talk about this evening. We've become sophisticated in the use of cameras, and also, as that sophistication has increased, the cost has gone down. This is the parking lot south of the police station on Lake Street, and this is some prior video. And basically, you can tell there's lights on and there's cars parked there. As the generation of cameras increases and that cost has gone down, the clarity of photographs has increased substantially, and also, we're -- we'll come up later in the presentation, pan tilt zoom is being replaced by these fixed areas of coverage. Also, the playback has become significantly more sophisticated. We can cover a lot of time in a minimum amount of personnel investment time to review the tapes. This is an event that some of the senior members of the city council may be familiar with. The ceiling in the 911 Center decided it didn't want to stay up anymore. Fortunately, no one was hurt in the incident. We've played this portion to compare and contrast that to the newer camera and the clarity of those cameras that we have acquired and installed in city buildings. This is an example of some of our on-street cameras and the level of sophistication that has brought. This is an example of how, in some applications, the pan tilt zoom is appropriate, and also, this camera can be controlled from the police station, and it provides an excellent platform for the recovery of information and the evaluation of traffic patterns and other situations. And also, the control from the police station is critical. We now have the ability for the 911 dispatcher to control this camera, focuses on an area to make a determination of what resources should be sent in case there is an emergency call. Down along Howard Street, I want to, first of all, applaud the efforts of BPAT. They have been invaluable partners in this endeavor in seeking a solution to the myriad of technical problems along Howard Street. Also, that Howard Street solution has been aided by Alderman Rainey and her request for the use of TIP funds for this solution. One of the critical things along this corridor and several other sections of the city, we do not have the fiber infrastructure. Consequently, the solutions -- Consequently, the solutions we've developed are all wireless. And as we utilize the federal dollars and grants that we've received, our goal is to develop a prototype camera that we can place and daisy-chain together throughout neighborhoods. Also, as the electronics become more sophisticated, lighter, therefore more portable, it's a little bit easier to move them around. And once again, the cameras under the control of the Police Department. This is some internal views of the police station. And I realize, hopefully, this slide won't go on too long, because when I was looking at this afternoon, it kind of gave me a headache. It kind of reminds me of, anybody see the movie The Fly where he had multiple? Okay. In any event, this allows us to look at multiple views of cell blocks. Obviously, when we have people in custody, they're our responsibility. Their safety becomes one of our primary concerns. These are some views of the exterior of the station and some areas in the station that are more prone to citizen encounters. We also have rapidly expanded the in-car video system. This is a street stop. We can play it back rather quickly. You'll see members of the NET Unit chasing the offender who's decided to flee from the car. This unfortunately is also an example of one of the cardinal rules of police work. You always need to leave someone behind. That'll become glaringly apparent here in a moment. I'm pretty sure whatever we were looking for left just then. These are a few examples of the technology that we focused on, on cameras. And once again, I want to talk about how a partner BPAT has been. We've been focused on cameras, new systems downtown, and also, these areas, let me see, the pan tilt zoom versus the fixed cameras. We're just getting a better quality from the fixed cameras. Here's a projection of that project, which will be funded primarily with federal dollars. And once again, as we look at this solution, our primary goal is to get a prototype camera, what we want and need, that we can apply in multiple locations. Cook County Project Gold Shield has installed two cameras downtown. The focus of these two cameras, because they were paid for by Homeland Security money, is primarily the transportation hubs in the center of the city with both the Metro and L-Tracks. And the views downtown in this area focus on that endeavor. Also, the cameras are adjustable. Should there be a major incident in the city, we would be able to transmit that video to the Cook County Emergency Operations Center, so that they can provide us with the necessary resources we would need to mitigate the emergency.
That's it? Excellent.
That's the camera part of the technology. Some of the other technology we're looking at is in-car reporting. One of the issues with that is the technology has gone department-wide. In the old days, we could have a piece of technology that was in the radio room, records really didn't care. Because of the integration of the information, all those systems have to work together, and we're becoming more sophisticated at that. The next step in in-car reporting is the installation of the CADS 400 system. This has been on track as a 911 project for quite some time, and I anticipate we will take substantial steps forward to the implementation of that CAD system and the eventual in-car reporting in the year 2010. With that, I'd ask if there's any questions.
I don't think so.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you for the explanation. Madam Mayor, does that conclude?
Yes, it does.
Your report. Next, communications city clerk, do you have any?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Just want to announce that the citizens have been calling the office for minutes of council meetings. Just want to let you know that all council meeting minutes are only available to the public after the next council meeting has met and approved those minutes. So you cannot get minutes until the next council meeting has moved and approved those minutes. They will be online. Just keep that in mind, that we don't hide anything from you, be as transparent as possible, but give us at least a week until the next council meeting meets. That's all I have. Two weeks, I'm sorry.
Thank you, city clerk. Next is special order of business, city manager.
Yes, Madam Mayor, Members of the Council, we have two items for you. Both are follow-up with our goal items. Let me see if I can get a signal here. The first this evening is the Council's Economic Development Goal. Would like to spend a few minutes talking about that and getting the Council's input. In your packet this evening, you have a document that talks about issues and strategies, which I'd like to briefly review. Also, last week, at the Economic Development Committee, there was a discussion of this topic. Would like to review the work that they did, as well as talk about some next steps, which would hopefully then bring us to a economic development work plan that would be approved by the City Council next month. Why issues and strategies? Certainly, in my nearly three months as your city manager, in talking about economic development, not only with members of the City Council, but also, community members and business leaders, really, there seems to be two separate parts of issues to discuss. First, really, to identify the problems that we're facing as a community. And the second, to look at strategies to implement solutions to those problems. It seems as if there's lots of strategies to fix problems, but not always a clear identification of what those problems are. And through the document that I proposed, and certainly the discussion that the Economic Development Committee had last week, there are big issues and small issues facing the city of Evanston, dealing with economic development. And I would hope that the work plan that your staff would be charged with undertaking over the next several months would look both at those big and small issues. They are not mutually exclusive. I think it's important that we look at the big-picture issues to help move the community forward, but certainly, there are lots of smaller issues in order to keep and retain businesses, help them expand the city of Evanston that we need to look at. As well as we're looking at issues, there are different partners that make sense for addressing those issues. And certainly, one of the takeaways, I hope, from this evening will be that we will go back and look at the list of issues that the Council has identified, and come back to you with a work plan that matches the appropriate resources, our different partners throughout the community, as well as city resources. Ultimately, a work plan with timeframes, measured results, and responsible parties for implementation, I think, is very key in order to move this goal forward. Finally, I think it's important that the City Council set an agenda for improvement. In my talks with aldermen, with members of the community, it seems many times the city of Evanston has reacted to proposals, to issues that have been brought forward, rather than setting an agenda to move forward with improvement. And I hope that this work plan would do that. In the document that I provided to the Council, was sort of a laundry list of issues that your staff, Morris Robinson, who has really been our lead person dealing with economic development issues, and I want to take this opportunity to recognize Morris for his outstanding work to moving Evanston forward over the last several years, as well as Dennis Marino, our interim community development director. Business assistance, business attraction, business retention, all important pieces as far as assistance. You know, what can we do with startups? What can we do with businesses that are perhaps already established, looking to come here? Existing businesses looking to expand, business attraction. I think it's important, not only do we move forward to attract businesses, but also to focus on the kind of businesses we'd like to see here. Business retention has components of all that. How we brand the city of Evanston, what can we do to attract both small businesses, natural retailers, commercial industrial businesses? What is it that makes Evanston special? Issues of buying Evanston, hiring Evanston, our own, the city government being business-friendly, working to make sure that any economic prosperity that comes from economic development is truly citywide and is inclusive of all members of our community. We have had a successful technology innovation center, which has served as a business incubator. What can we do to continue to support that endeavor? What can we do to expand that? What can we do to invest in local stimulus issues? What can we do to market our community? What can we do to work closely with our various partners? And those partners range from Northwestern to the hospitals, to Rotary International, to the Chamber of Commerce, the Economic Development Corporation, the downtown Evanston, the North Shore Convention and Visitors Bureau. We have lots of partners in the area of economic development. What can we do to work with them? Our revitalization and redevelopment of targeted areas, including the downtown, the TIF districts, our commercial corridors. We've also talked quite a bit about revenue-generating initiatives, specifically water sales, skills development and job training. There are lots of Evanston residents who are underemployed or not-employed. What can we do to be helpful to them? As the mayor mentioned, we were in Washington, D.C. last week and heard a lot about green jobs, and could green jobs be something that we'd want to work with various partners on to bring those to the city of Evanston? The issue of tourism, folks visiting not only Evanston but the North Shore. What can we do to maximize those dollars? So those kind of, were sort of a laundry list of issues. And then strategies, what could we do to try to move some of those issues forward? Again, looking at specific areas, being business-friendly, facilitating money and assistance from other levels of government, financing, facilitating with both the public and private sector, working with minority-owned, women-owned, and Evanston-owned businesses, making sure that our information technology structure is what it needs to be. Looking at the resources we have, research analysis, looking on the retail side, what kind of leakage we're having, what can we do to target assistance by sector, and also to reach out in as aggressive a way as possible with visiting our existing businesses. So last Wednesday evening, the Economic Development Committee met, and staff put forward that list of issues to them. Through their discussions at the meeting last Wednesday evening, the committee took those issues and really boiled them down to four areas: business attraction, business retention, marketing and branding, and business expansion. In the area of business attraction, the committee, again, looked at a lot of the same strategies that I've already covered, but to look at economic stimulus, look at our partners, to look at critical targeted properties in need of assistance, certainly areas throughout the city include that, working with commercial real estate brokers, making sure that we have an inventory of all our businesses who are here, to recruit on the basis of what's here and what we could need to add to that. To project clear and positive business message, have stronger presence with Northwestern University events that may generate business leads, again, to work with existing businesses, and to bring residents who are regional business leaders to help us in our business attraction efforts. More office space, utilizing that, again, identifying things that are missing, looking at performing arts as a point for economic development to bring people here to the city of Evanston. The next area, business retention, again, looking at who is here, looking at what redevelopment impacts are, displacing existing businesses, to project as a city government a pro-small business policy through business visitations, to work more closely with our partners with downtown Evanston, promote city services and resources to small businesses, expand, help to businesses and business associations, and really be a clearinghouse for information for businesses that are here in the city of Evanston. In the area of marketing and branding, again, talked a little bit about this, but really to make sure that we're addressing the, all of the good parts that we have, not only the downtown, but Howard Street, our other commercial corridors, work more closely with our brokers, market to women-owned businesses. Certainly, Evanston has a large number of those. Look to make sure that we're doing what we need to do with the marketing for business meetings and other tourist opportunities. Continue to work closely with Northwestern University. In the area of business expansion, to identify tools that can be useful with the expansion of businesses, to learn from successful local companies that have done well in expanding their businesses with help from the city of Evanston. And then, sort of in other issues category, the committee identified was to have city and staff have a comprehensive focus with a centralized approach to make sure that we're moving forward. Clearly, we would need, once the council decides on a work plan, I would want to come back to you with the recommendations for additional resources, certainly in order to move these issues forward. I want to make sure that the city of Evanston staff is properly equipped to do that. So I'm asking the Council tonight to basically take in the work that your staff has done, take in the work that the Economic Development Committee has done, provide any additional input that you would have. Then at that point, would like to take the, these discussions and send them to our partners throughout Evanston to get additional comment, and to ask those partners to be prepared to have those comments come back at the next meeting of the Economic Development Committee, where your staff will present a draft work plan, and that's coming up on November the 18th. And then would ask to come back to the City Council on November 23rd for approval of a work plan that would allow us to move forward. Again, Madam Mayor, Members of the Council, I know this is really your number-one goal of the 12 goals established. I think by separating what the issues are of importance, and again, I appreciate the work that the Economic Development Committee spent over a couple of hours last Wednesday evening, identifying those issues, and then to make sure that we're implementing the most appropriate strategies, not only using existing city forces, but additional resources that can be brought to bear by the city of Evanston, but probably also, most importantly, working very closely with our partners throughout the community. So with that, I'm happy to put up the summary of the discussion that the Economic Development Committee had the other evening, because I think that's really where we are at this point, and would be happy to annotate that as necessary.
Does anyone have any questions?
Then, Madam Mayor, if not, what we will do is transmit this information to our various economic development partners, ask them for their input in time for the next Economic Development Committee meeting, and then come back at your second meeting in November with a proposed work plan for the Council to review.
I have one comment. Congresswoman Shakowsky was talking with me this morning, and she brought up our cooperating with Northwestern University and trying to attract businesses in nanotechnology, which I told her was an excellent idea and that we would discuss it. And I think we all want to do that.
Very good then, Madam Mayor. I'd like then to move on to the next item under the special order of business, and that is a discussion regarding efficiency and effectiveness of services. Again, as the Council set its goals for the year, this was an issue that was identified. There was not a lot of talk at the time of the Council goal-setting, specifically identifying what some of the issues were here. There was some talk about customer service. There was some talk about, you know, making it easier for our residents and businesses to do business with the city of Evanston. So I'd like to ask the Council now to just maybe spend a few minutes, as you did at your last meeting, talking about safety issues, to talk about this goal, to allow your staff then to come back at a future meeting with, again, another work plan to sort of crystallize some issues to move this goal forward.
Ooh, I win? First one.
Yes, you won.
One of the things I know we've talked a lot about is benchmarking and looking at best practices for effectiveness. And a, where a lot of times, we hear from staff of what's happening in their respective departments, but I'm not sure that we have set out goals and measurements in the same way. So if we can look at other cities, municipalities, entities, to look at what are the best practices are, that'd be very helpful.
Thank you. Alderman Grover.
In our quest to improve customer service in Evanston, I think it's important to have a feedback mechanism, some kind of regular customer satisfaction surveys, tie them perhaps to even performance evaluations, provide a link on the city's website, a place in the Civic Center, other public facilities, where we can gather insights and input and ideas about customer service and city services. And then, Wally, Mr. Bobkowitz, I liked your idea about a 3-1-1 service in Evanston.
Does everyone know what the 3-1-1 is?
I agree with those points also. A particular interest to me is getting that feedback mechanism employed. Something, as Alderman Grover suggested, on the website... as Alderman Grover suggested, on the website, that's very well displayed, easy to find. So if somebody goes to the website, a lot of times when someone visits the city page, they have a problem or a concern and they want to voice an opinion. And if that was, I guess, easier to find in a direct destination where that could be distributed by one person to the appropriate managers or departments, that would be helpful. When we had the conversation originally, one of the things that I want to make sure gets included under the scope of efficiency is also cost efficiency of performing the services. So for me, that is an important component of, of the efficiency aspect. So in addition to the customer service, are we doing things in the most cost effective manner as well?
Alderman, when?
One of the things that I've heard over the years a number of times is that we have a number of terrific employees who definitely go above and beyond, but frequently my phone calls are, or emails are, you know, I've called the city three times and now I'm calling you. And I'd like to, you know, I'm not entirely sure what the solution to that is because we are a large, a large organization, but if there were some way in which we could, one, train the people who take those phone calls to make sure that, that the person who's asked or made the request, that's logged or chartered, or that, that we have a way in which that person does, the city staff doesn't get off the phone until they figured out a way to help the person who's called, or put them in the right direction. I'm not entirely sure what the, the solution is in terms of people calling repeatedly and not getting what they need. So I, I think that's something that we have to figure out a way to do. When citizens are using self-help measures, they're not contacting us. They're picking up the phone, they're going to the website, and, but they're not getting a response back from, an effective response back from the city.
Thank you. I'm reading a book right now called The Cost of Bad Behavior, and it's a, it's a study about all the ways in which incivility costs and amounts to something for an organization's bottom line. And if we could incorporate civility into all of our relations with each other, with residents, in a way that, for example, will
Sort of like that.
Make it easier for us to do our jobs, make the residents feel as if we are more responsive. I recommend the book to you. I'm not quite finished with it, but it studies a number of corporations and organizations which have realized a real improvement in their bottom line, in their stock price, when they introduced civility measures into their organization and made it part of the culture.
Alderman Bur- oh, thank you, Alderman Grover. I'm going to practice being civil. Alderman Burris.
I also want to talk about economy of scale as far as partnering with other local municipalities that maybe border us about doing services together, also maybe other not-for-profit entities in the community. So looking at the duplication of efforts, instead of everybody being in their own separate cylinder, how can we go across entities and not just looking at it in a singular way?
I would also like to look at ways to reward people who do a good job when people do call.
Right.
Seeing no more lights, Ms. Oh, Alderman Fisk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a couple of really small points here, just in terms of using our website, I think it's been vastly approved. I think Wally's blog is fabulous. I think it also helps people to identify that there are people who are working in the city, who are on the other end of the phone and on the answering side of the emails. I would like to have photographs of our city employees on the website. So when you click on a department, you can see the people who are in that department. I think, you know, making, making this a more human experience for everyone, I think is very valuable. On the practical side, folks I know who search the city's site and search the city code have a problem with the code, and I understand that we don't, that it's not the city of Evanston who's monitoring the code. But I think if there is a way for us to work with our supplier of that information, to make the code a little bit more user friendly so that people can find what they want when they are searching the website, I think that would be very helpful.
Thank you. Now, seeing no further lights, city manager, I think that's all the wisdom we have to offer you.
Very good, Madam Mayor. Thank you. We'll come back at a future meeting with some additional ideas and a work plan on how to move that forward.
Next is citizen comment. I'm going to call four names at a time, and if you would come up and be ready to speak, that would be terrific. Mr. Rizki, Joe Jaskulski, my apologies. Thank you. Len, whose last name I'm not even trying anymore. And Maurice Kelly. Please give your name and address.
Janad Rizki.
And you each have three minutes. I will be timed.
I was going to speak on two things. Actually, I didn't even know there was a camera presentation tonight. That interested me quite a bit, because several years ago, I filed a Freedom of Information request to look at some of these camera thing, videos, and was told I couldn't see them. I need to go to court to see them. I've been concerned about this for a long time, because the city has no policy on the use of these cameras. There isn't really a policy. So citizens, as you saw those cameras, could be used to even, you know, look into citizens' windows, and you have no policy really to run this. So I think about that, that you need to look at this. I said this before at the council, of how those cameras are being used, and not against the cameras, but because you have nothing that controls it, you could have problems in the future. The other thing I want to speak about is this ordinance on the city code related to residential buildings inspections of condos and things. I think this is more, another way to maybe get revenue for the city that's unnecessary and an invasion of privacy to people's homes. The cities had, also do this with rental property, and I guess many years ago, the city would actually go even into private homes back in the 60s, and this started really, I guess, the minority neighborhoods in town many, many years ago. And then when it went across the, basically the canal, people put a stop to it. And, and these types of inspections, I think, aren't unnecessary, and have no real value and serve no purpose. And they're just really, really, I think, to keep the people in the building department busy when it's not necessary. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Joe Jaskulski. I live at 2309 Grant Street. I'm a 25-year resident of the 7th Ward. I am a LEED accredited professional. I'm a registered professional engineer. I've been in the energy business for 32 years. I worked for a large commercial contractor. I'm an executive there. I'm involved in several energy savings projects in the Chicago Land area at this time. I'm a strong proponent of sustainability in design and construction. However, I am strongly opposed to the green building ordinance that is on the agenda this evening as currently drafted. I do not believe that the city of Evanston should give up its control of our building code to an outside agency that we do not control. And I do not believe that the LEED process was designed for this purpose. The cost of LEED certification is substantial, and I believe it will halt development of some marginal projects in the city, and particularly those in lower income areas. I think we're setting up a disincentive for owners of existing facilities to rehabilitate those structures as well. Also want to point out that LEED accredited facilities are not necessarily energy-saving facilities. I am in favor of seeing changes to our building code, to incorporate improvements there, to enhance sustainability, and I would encourage you to, council, to consider that. I would also like to mention that the U.S. Green Building Council reports that 132 municipalities have incorporated LEED requirements into their building codes, out of approximately 18,000 municipalities in the United States. Of this small amount, the vast majority have only required LEED on the facilities that the city itself owns. Only a small fraction have delved into private developments, and of those that have delved into private developments, the vast majority of those have encouraged LEED certification by offering incentives rather than by requiring them. Only a very few cities have actually required LEED certification of all development. I am not encouraging you to vote no against this ordinance, rather, I'm encouraging you to send it to the committee that is also on the agenda to be redrafted into a more workable ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Len Shera of the Environment Board, and I'm going to speak in favor of the green ordinance. And I think what Joe brought up was pretty important, because he said very few municipalities have an ordinance like this. This is a chance for us to really be a leader. There are two modifications that, I think there was a memo on your, on your desk, limiting the scope to new construction, the Environment Board supports, as well as clarifying some of the language about when the ordinance takes effect in terms of grandfathering. Secondly, I want to address some of the precedent that's been circulating specifically, the New York Times article on the effectiveness of LEED. Without going into a lot of detail around calculating a mean versus a median, and actually having read the actual reports the article was based on, I think it is safe to say yes, with over 1 billion square feet of LEED certified construction, some projects are not performing as well as they should be. However, you look at the data, roughly one in every three, one in every three projects on average are performing better. I recently read a report, Doing Well by Doing Good: Green Office Buildings by the University of California, Berkeley, published this August 2009. This paper looked at the economic value of the certification of green buildings, a value derived from impersonal market transactions rather than engineering estimates. For some 10,000 subject proper, subject and control buildings, they mesh publicly available information on the addresses of LEED, Energy Star and LEED rated office buildings to the characteristics of these buildings, their rental rates and selling prices. They also found that buildings with a green rating command rental rates that are roughly 3% higher per square foot than otherwise identical buildings, controlling for the quality and specific location of the office buildings. Selling prices were roughly 16% higher. So good news for developers, not such good news for actual tenants. Lastly, I had to sort of modify things. Leadership and compromise. Even though I believe the provisions in this ordinance are not very overly burdensome to the development community, there are very few, as Joe pointed out, municipalities that have any such building code. Now is a chance to set Evanston apart, and in a good way. Is LEED perfect? No, but it's a start. Now, is this the ordinance that I would like? No. Is it the ordinance that others would like? No, but I believe as written, it's with the staff recommendations, it's a good middle ground. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Maurice Kelly. I'm a resident of Chicago. I'm, I'm here to address the Peddler Ordinance. I want to thank everyone who helped to table amending the Peddler Ordinance. If the Peddler Ordinance is revisited, I would like to be allowed to participate at the committee level. My contact information is available through my license application. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, Andy Spatz, Michael Drennan and Joseph Hill.
Here I am again, on the same subject, the green ordinance. I'm a 25-year Evanston resident. I'm a member of Addis Spats Properties. We do small-scale development here in Evanston. I'm also a partner in Barry Spats Architects. We are LEED certified and have limited experience in this, in this end. At the last council meeting, a green ordinance committee was created, and tonight its members will be formally appointed. Thanks in advance for the privilege. Per an email from the mayor on 10/16/09, we are supposed to bring a proposal to the council no later than December 1st. There are those who wish to exclude adaptive reuse and interior renovations from the present ordinance draft and pass the balance as is. I strongly disagree. Let's stick to the December 1st deadline. What's the hurry? The Spark agendas have been thin at best, with meetings being canceled due to lack of cases on a regular basis. Projects going through the pipeline deal with air conditioning, condenser locations and residential additions. Nothing of any real scale that would be affected by this ordinance. We are all well aware of how depressed the real estate market is. Everything I read from respected sources points to additional mass failures in the commercial market and subsequent foreclosures. We, we all see the empty stores and vacant shopping mall spaces. With this further market decline, we have the luxury of not being pressured to pass an incomplete, non-comprehensive document. Part of what I wish to personally bring to this new committee is my skill in creating financial computer models of various sized projects my fellow team members want me to analyze. Professionally, I am equally skilled in this as well as design work. The idea is that we will be able to see how any of our ordinance concepts will affect a project's bottom line. It's insane to pass an ordinance that, that until this is done and the stakeholders understand the ramifications. As I have said before, and I don't think many believe, it's possible to create an ordinance that will encourage future development, accomplishes energy conservation, saves money for the end user and reduces our carbon footprint. All of this is necessary for growth in Evanston and needs that growth, all of this is necessary for the growth Evanston needs to keep in a great place to live, work and play, and as well as contributing funds to meet our future debt obligations. Over the past 10 years, the Line Webbers and Addis Spats Properties have started a major transition in the 5th Ward.
Mr. Spatz, can you wind it down?
Yes, I can. I have two more sentences. Thank you.
Perfect.
Next on my agenda are several marginally profitable new construction projects, once the real estate market improves. Adding 6% to 8% to the budget without a way to recoup those costs kills the projects. As a progressive city, we need to understand the fit between money and technologies are in their infancy. A green building ordinance is not a merit badge to be displayed on a wall. It has serious ramifications and needs to be treated with that level of respect. Please let me deal with the ordinance as a whole and allow me the opportunity to do my part to make it right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, members of the council. Thank you for having us. My name is Michael Drennan. I am manager of sales for DM Systems Incorporated, a small firm selling wound care products here in Evanston for the past 25 years. My father, Dennis Drennan, M.D., invented several products that help prevent and treat bed sores. You might not think this is otherwise related to the green building ordinance, however, we have had the honor and the privilege of reducing costs at nursing homes and hospitals nationwide over the past 25 years. However, these facilities are now not simply asking us to provide the same clinical excellence that our products have always provided, they are also asking us to perform in a more sustainable fashion, to reduce our impact on landfills and to reduce our impact in the atmosphere with the reduction of our carbon footprint. Now, this takes several different elements, and one of those is product development, which we are currently pursuing. This is no small feat, because we are a small family-owned business, which means you're looking at the product developer right here. We've got a bunch of different hats, typical to small family businesses, and the other of those hats I have to wear is finding certifying agencies who will recognize the progress our company is making in performing in a more sustainable fashion. This isn't something we necessarily drafted on our own. This is something that group purchasing organizations, large legal entities that aggregate the purchasing power of hospitals and nursing homes nationwide are requiring of us. They're saying, if you want to bid competitively on our contracts, you have to demonstrate that you are acting in a sustainable fashion as a business. There are a number of ways we can do that, and making sustainable products is one. We're pursuing that. The other is to pursue certification through some third, third party. And there are a number of those available. Practice green health on a nationwide level. Here in Evanston, we have the Business Alliance for Sustainable Evanston. I bring all this up just to let you know that you're not alone in having to consider these measures, and he brought up, these are no small measures, but will seriously impact how people build, how people renovate, and to an extent, only to an extent, how people live. If folks want to continue having bikini parties in the middle of New Year's, well, that's their business, not yours. Yours is to define the tone and well, that's their business, not yours. Yours is to define the tone and affect the agency that will bring our kids and our grandkids a more sustainable world. So, in closing, I just want to say that if you want to help small businesses like mine, one way you could do it is by setting a great example, not just to our businesses, but to other businesses in Evanston, by passing something like the Green Building Ordinance. Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Joe Hill, and I live on Broadway in Evanston. And now for something completely different. I'm here to urge you to reject ordinance 95-0-09, particularly as it relates to changes in the Central Street overlay district. This ordinance relating to changes in that district is based on inaccurate and not good information. As such, we should not be passing, you know, rules and regulations that's not based on good information. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. That concludes citizen comment. At least, I am hoping that it does, because I do not have a list of people who wanted to speak that are not on an agenda item, so I'm thinking that there weren't any. All right. City Clerk?
Before we go to the consent agenda, there's a correction to the minutes of the October 12th on the call of wards. Ward 1 should have included reference to the Rules Committee and handled by staff. Those are two corrections to the minutes.
Thank you, City Clerk. Alderman Rainey, could we have the consent agenda?
Yes, ma'am. First item on the consent agenda is approval of the minutes from our last meeting. And then, we have a request from Administration Public Works to approve the Evanston City payroll through October 11, and that is in the amount of $2,318,218.94. We ask for your approval of A2, the City of Evanston bills, through October 27, 2009, in the amount of $3,180,954.99. Then, under Administration and Public Works, we have approval of natural gas purchase for 2009 through 2010. We received a bid in the amount of $6.20 per Decatherm, and that is from CenterPoint Energy. It is for 12 months, and the use will be to 14 city facilities. Next, approval for a contract for Viaduct screening, which is A3.2, and that is in the amount of, well, there's an error here, and I'm just going to correct it in the consent agenda. I hope you all accept it. It's in the amount of $30,030. Funding is from the Capital Improvement Fund in the amount of $30,000, which was budgeted for this project, and the bid goes to Smitherene Pest Management Services. Next is a general wage increase for all full and permanent part-time, non-union employees. The committee recommends that you approve this. It is in the amount of 2%, and really simply provides parity for those employees who are not part of an organized union. Next is change order for Duncan Solutions, which is Citation Management. It's an expenditure having to do with parking ticket collections, and that is in the amount of $291,800, and it really has to do with additional work and additional collections. Next item is A5, and that is off the consent agenda and will be addressed by the committee chair. Ordinance 85-0-09 is going to be removed from the consent agenda and will be addressed by the committee chair. Ordinance 90-0-09 amends Title 10 Motor Vehicle and Traffic, Chapter 11 Traffic Schedules. This has to do with adding long-term, short-term, and a variety of different kinds of meters on various streets. Item A8 is Ordinance 97-0-09, which has to do with a special one-day liquor license, amending the city code of 1979 Title III Business Regulations, and that has to do with clarifying hours and days of service for the one-day liquor license. Ordinance 100-0-09 updates the authorized signatories and financial institutions for deposits, investments of city funds. This has to do with updating the city manager, the finance staff, and various institutions and brokers that we might do business with. Under Planning and Development, ordinance 95-0-09 is off the consent agenda and will be addressed by the committee chair. Item P2, Ordinance 103-0-09, enacting a new section of the city code related to registration of rental residential buildings, having to do with adding condominium unit requirements of managers and condominium associations. Next item is under Human Services, which is the Green Building Ordinance. That is off the consent agenda and will be addressed by the chair. For appointments, under, these are all Green Building Ordinance Committee appointees. Paige Finnegan, Elizabeth Kenny, Ron Kieschak, David L. Olson, Leonard Skara, Andrew Spatz, Christopher Thomas, and for reappointment, David Schoenfeld to the City of Evanston Northwestern University Committee. Madam Mayor, this completes the consent agenda.
Thank you. Second. It's been moved and seconded. City Clerk, could we have a roll call?
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Jean Baptiste?
Aye.
Alderman Nguyen?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Holmes?
Aye.
Alderman Tindham?
Aye.
Alderman Grover?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Burris?
Aye.
The consent agenda passes nine to zero. Alderman Rainey, could we have a report from Administration and Public Works?
Yes, ma'am. Item A5, having to do with the city's electrical supply agreement with MidAmerica Energy. We were going to ask that this be extended, and instead, we are removing it, requesting approval to remove it from the agenda completely. I think we need a vote. Is there a second?
Second.
Just a voice vote, I think.
It's been moved and seconded, A5, to remove the resolution authorizing the city manager to sign an extension of the city's electricity supply agreement with MidAmerica Energy Company from the agenda.
And the reason, Madam Mayor, is because we don't want to commit to a price that we might be able to economize at a later date.
I like the reason. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? The ayes have it.
Next, Madam Mayor, is A6, Ordinance 85-0-09, which amends Title III, Chapter 13 of the Evanston City Code, having to do with peddlers and solicitors. The city manager has requested that he and Northwestern and Evanston Police Department review this issue and report back to us after the basketball season ends on a plan to control the pedestrian issues.
It's been moved and seconded, and seeing no lights. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? The ayes have it.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. That completes the Administration Public Works agenda.
Alderman Nguyen, do we have planning and development, please?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. We had two items. With respect to item P1, which is Ordinance 95-0-09, amending and enacting sections of the zoning ordinance that relate to townhouse orientation, and also authorizing major variations to the pedestrian area and active ground-floor use requirements of the overlay district and the Central Street corridor, what the committee has decided is that we should move forward with the section of this ordinance that relates to the townhouse orientation, because there is no dispute that that needs to be corrected in our ordinance, and that we should delete the two sections that relate to the overlay district on the Central Street corridor, and have those studied further by the Central Street neighbors and the zoning department in order to make more appropriate corrections. So, I would move first that we delete Sections 2, subsection 7, and subsection 8.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to delete Section 2, subsection 7, and 8. This is a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes.
Then, Madam Mayor, I would move approval of the ordinance 95-0-09, as amended.
Second.
We have, it's been moved and seconded. Could we have a voice vote? I mean, roll call, City Clerk. It's not even 10 yet.
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Jean Baptiste?
Aye.
Alderman Nguyen?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Holmes?
Aye.
Alderman Tindham?
Aye.
Alderman Grover?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Burris?
Aye.
Nine to zero. The motion passes.
That concludes my report, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman Nguyen. Human Services, we have Alderman Jean Baptiste.
Yes, thank you very much, Madam Mayor. For Human Services Committee, we only have one item. Move approval of ordinance 14-0-09, adopting the U.S. Green Building Council's Leadership in Energy and Environmental Design Green Building Rating System for certain construction and renovation projects in the city.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Alderman Wilson?
I would like to, I guess at this point, reiterate my prior motion to amend the ordinance as it's currently drafted. The changes I would like to make are to, well, first of all, let me say, I think it's very important that we take a step forward here and actually accomplish something in getting an ordinance drafted, completed, and approved. This isn't the perfect ordinance to me. I'm sure it's not the perfect ordinance to most of the people that have been involved in the process, but it is a step forward, and I view it as an acceptable compromise for the interim. One of the proposed amendments I'm making is to remove Section 3, and the purpose of that, in my mind, is to allow for more careful consideration as to how an ordinance will apply to existing buildings and what some people term adaptive reuse or interior renovations. I understand that a lot of work has gone into this project, and the ordinance is close to where we need it to be, but I don't feel it's quite exactly where we want it to be with regard to that portion. However, with regard to the balance of the ordinance, I feel it is appropriate to go ahead and get that passed. I think it's important to do this now, because I think it's crucial to get the clock ticking. My other proposed amendment is in line with what the city staff is suggesting, and that is adding a Section 8 that accepts certain projects that are basically already underway, or people have relied on the existing building code in taking certain actions. So, by adopting something today, we start that clock ticking. If we were to delay the adoption a month, two months, six months, a year, whatever it ends up being, anybody who comes in between now and that point in time has the opportunity to be excluded from the effectiveness of the ordinance, and that's why I view it's important to get something passed today. So, with those points in mind, I move that we pass the ordinance, or I'm sorry, we amend the ordinance as drafted, to remove Section 3, reserve that section for future use, and add the new Section 8 that the city staff has proposed. I would suggest a small modification to that Section 8, subsection B, after the word "position", to add the language as it says, "prior to the effective date of this ordinance," just so it's unequivocally clear as to when that person, what point in time, the person who might have relied on the ordinance, or on the existing ordinances, can go back and accept themselves from the effectiveness.
Second. Alderman Rainey?
Well, I'm going to ask that you not approve this amendment at this time, because I don't think an ordinance that sounds like from those who are proponents is going to get an awful lot of press, because it'll be one of the few passed in the United States of America. And it should not be fragmented. It should not be piecemeal, and that's what we're doing. We have people in our community that we've just appointed to a committee. We've just appointed them. We told them that they're going to be on a committee to help draft the perfect ordinance. I want the perfect ordinance. I don't see any point in settling for something half-baked. I just don't believe in that. There's no reason to pass something that nobody likes. I've heard that among politicians so many times. This must be great, because this side doesn't like it, and that side doesn't like it. So, what that means to me is you're getting a mediocre ordinance that nobody likes. I think we ought to table this to a date certain, December 1st. If that is a Monday, I'm not sure, Madam Mayor, is it? It's not a council Monday, that's for sure. Whatever the first council meeting in December is, date certain, absolutely no exceptions whatsoever, the ordinance must appear before the council voted up and down in its entirety with these people that we have just appointed and told at our last meeting, somebody read the mayor's letter, saying, you know, "Congratulations, you're going to be on the committee." People thought they were going to be on the committee. They didn't know they were going to come here tonight or turn on their TV and find out, "Well, we don't trust you to handle the whole ordinance, so we want to push something through, because it's important we get something done." Something that this side doesn't like and that side doesn't like. Where is the logic in that, when we have experts in the community who the mayor has so properly appointed to serve on this committee? People who've actually built things in this town.
If there's a motion, I'd like to second it. And I don't know whether legal, we can, you know.
I think there is a motion.
There is a motion on the floor, but I don't know.
A motion to table.
A motion to table supersedes. I don't know.
Motion to table is not debatable.
That's not debatable, so we'll vote on the motion to table.
But, Madam Mayor, I think it's, I don't feel that it's fair to throw that motion out right now. I think if people want to talk about this a little bit, that's fine, but I think the prudent thing to do tonight is to eventually table it after people get their opinions out. There is a motion on the floor. I, you know, my mind isn't thinking Robert's rules right now. I don't know if a motion to table supersedes a motion to amend. I'm not sure.
Motion to table is not debatable, and as I understand it, Elke's still here, that we would have to vote on it now. Can Alderman Rainey withdraw it?
She can withdraw.
I can certainly withdraw it.
And you can withdraw it, or we can vote on it?
I'll tell you what. In deference to my sister Alderman here, Alderman Grover, and in light of her demand for civility, I'm going to withdraw, right at this moment, my motion to table, but I would ask that you recognize me soon, after people have their say.
Always recognize you when you want to be recognized.
Because this ordinance needs to be tabled, so that we can get it right.
Alderman Wilson?
And for those people who are not fully aware, the proposed ordinance has been put together by a group of people that have been working on that for an extended period of time. It's not something that's come up out of nowhere. A lot of people have worked long and hard on the proposed ordinance, and, you know, people say, you know, "You compromise, you settle, both people go away unhappy." I'm content with this as a compromise. There's a wide spectrum of people who have different views, and we're not ever going to satisfy every single person on that spectrum with any ordinance. Going back and trying to make it perfect isn't actually going to happen. You know, you're going to have some people that are unhappy, and some people that are pleased, but I feel that it's very important to actually take a step forward, get something accomplished, and taking out this one discreet portion of what's been put together to make sure that that does fit nicely with the balance of the ordinance, which stands perfectly on its own. I think that's the most appropriate thing to do.
Thank you. I have no idea whose light went on first, so Alderman Jean-Petiste.
I'm in full agreement with you about the modifications that you want to make, but it doesn't make sense for us to move forward right now since we just appointed a committee, and on those people we appointed were supposed to be in the prior committee that the city manager was supposed to pull, pull together. Okay? Some of the small builders were supposed to take part in that process, and that did not happen. So it's not really, I don't think we, you know, disagree in substance as to what we should do, and I think we will pass a green, you know, ordinance, but I, I just think that it doesn't make sense. If the mayor just appointed a committee to do this work and then we vote on it, does that mean that this committee then can take whatever we voted on and try to take it apart and come back and suggest amendment for us to re-debate? It just procedurally doesn't make sense to me, and I understand the, the need for us to move forward. Because I've been part of that discussion at a Human Services Committee level as well, and I appreciate all the work that the Environmental Board and everybody committed who've come to the meetings in expectation of something passing. I understand that. But does it make sense? I mean, you know, to reward, for the sake of rewarding the work as opposed to taking into account as to where we are right now, that we just appointed some people to sit down and be part of the process? So that's why I had voted earlier to, I had seconded the motion to table, and December first is what, almost like six weeks away.
Alderman Win.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm in support of Alderman Wilson's proposal, and my reasons are that the most, it, it seems to me that the issue that has caused the greatest consternation and most of the focus of the debate is, is Section Three, that the, and that is the section that we are sending back for the committee to examine, that the, the rest of the ordinance has not had this great deal of controversy surrounding it, and I think that we should move forward with that portion of it. That's the heart of the, the ordinance in terms of our commitment to a green building ordinance, and with respect to the, the question of renovation, what's the correct size, what does renovation mean, I understand those concerns. There isn't enough definition. That portion is vague. We need clarification on that. But with respect to the other portions of the ordinance, I think we're all very clear on that. So I, I would agree with Alderman Wilson that we send, we approve the ordinance without Section Three and also with the additions on Section Eight, as recommended by the staff.
Thank you, Alderman Win. Alderman Burris.
Thank you, Mayor Tisdale. As many of you know, I've been a strong supporter of the green building ordinance, including the renovation piece of it, but after talking with the Environment Board and the committee, I'm willing to vote for this piecemeal approach that, and the changes to it this evening. I think we should move forward with that. Someone from the committee said, "Don't let the perfect be the enemy of the good," so I don't know that we will get it perfect, and I don't know that going back again and coming back December first, we will have a perfect ordinance, but I'm going to defer to Alderman Wilson, and let's get something on the books, and hopefully by December first, we can have a committee that will look at the renovations. But I think a portion of it, we need to be very clear and transparent about what that committee will be doing, when they're meeting, can other people show up to that meeting, and what they will be delivering to us. I think that was part of the problem previously is that we did not have a clear understanding of what was happening, and we need to know that. Thanks.
Thank you, Alderman Burris. Alderman Wilson.
Actually, Alderman Win covered the other points that was going to make sure were made, so.
And thank you, Alderman Win. Alderman Rainey, I see no more lights. Oh, wait, no, I do. Alderman Tindham beat you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Tisdale. I have, I have struggled with this, as, as many of us have. It's a very important issue. I do think I will, I don't think I will, I will support Alderman Wilson's proposal tonight to forward this without the Section Three. It was my understanding in, in organizing the committee to address the ordinance that it was exactly and only Section Three that this committee was to address. Whether that message was conveyed to the committee, I'm not, or how clearly it was conveyed, I'm not sure, but that was my understanding, and I will support the amendment as amended.
I think I could answer that. It was my understanding that if, if the council passed the green building ordinance, the majority of it, then the committee would work on Section Three. If the council did not pass the majority of the ordinance, then the committee would work on the entire ordinance. Without knowing what the council was going to do, it was rather hard to tell the committee what would, what their assignment specifically would be. Alderman Rainey.
Well, I think if you spoke with the new members of the committee, you would find that their understanding of their mission was much different. I think they thought they were going to be able to have input on all of the ordinance, not just the little piece, and for those of you who are telling the new members of this committee, the people who actually work in this community building things, you will find that they're very interested in the new construction part of this ordinance, very interested and very concerned, and have an awful lot to offer. This isn't, this isn't something that, I, I'm, I'm very surprised by the urge to, to get notoriety here, to get something passed. I'm, I'm really disappointed in us for looking at this ordinance in that way as opposed to the best possible ordinance we can have. I'm really not interested in being one of the top 25 cities in the United States who pushed through a green building ordinance, or at least part of one. I, I don't think, I don't think we're honored by that at all, and I think to exclude, now, somebody said, let me go back up. Somebody said this group has worked very hard. Yes, they have worked very hard. They've worked very hard on the ordinance. They've brought us all sorts of information. They've quoted all sorts of journals and newspapers, but the people who are on the street, who have been doing the work in this town, why are we so resistant to letting them have a conversation and input about the entire ordinance? There is nothing to lose, absolutely nothing to lose. And also, I think, I think the, David Olson, the contractor, has had just some brilliant comments to make on this matter, and I'm surprised that we're not just stepping back and saying, "Oh, my. Why, why aren't we going to do this? Why aren't we going to listen to this man?" I think we're afraid to listen to them. I think we're afraid to hear some of the pitfalls that might come from those conversations. So I am going to move to table this until the first meeting in December, so that the committee, so that the committee that, I'm going to explain why. So that the committee, we told this city that we were appointing to work on this ordinance can do that. This is probably the first time we've ever appointed a committee or new members to a committee and then pulled the rug out from under them and said, "Surprise, we didn't mean that. We didn't mean what you thought we meant." I, I think, I think we would all do ourselves a favor by tabling this so that this whole ordinance can be brought back to us.
Now, second, a second motion.
It has been moved and seconded to table the green building ordinance. All in favor?
Aye.
Roll call. You want a roll call? All right. Roll call, City Clerk.
Alderman Fisk.
No.
Alderman Jean-Petiste.
Aye.
Alderman Win.
No.
No.
Alderman Wilson.
No.
Alderman Holmes.
So excited to get this ordinance.
Alderman Holmes.
Aye.
Alderman Tindham.
No.
Alderman Grover.
No.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman Burris.
No.
The motion to table is defeated, six to three. Which, yeah, goes, the next motion would be Alderman Wilson's, and Alderman Burris wants to speak.
I would just say, can we call the vote?
Oh, all right. The next motion is Alderman Wilson's.
Motion to.
Motion to remove Section Three.
Add Section Eight. Section B.
And sub, all right. Alderman Wilson, would you repeat what you want added?
Do we have that in writing?
Section Eight.
All right. City Council, or Corporation Council apparently got it, but delete Section Three, add proposed Section Eight, and modify the proposed Section Eight such that the words "prior to the effective date of this ordinance" are added after the word "position."
Thank you. City Clerk? Could we have a roll call?
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman Jean-Petiste.
Aye.
Alderman Win.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Holmes.
Aye.
Alderman Tindham.
Aye.
Alderman Grover.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
No.
Alderman Burris.
Aye.
The motion passes eight to one.
What about the ordinance, Madam?
Then we're back to the ordinance as amended. City Clerk, could we have, it's been moved and seconded. Could we have a roll call?
Has it been moved? Has it been seconded?
All right. Whoa, who moved it?
I believe, I believe Alderman Jean-Petiste.
Alderman Jean-Petiste.
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman Jean-Petiste.
Aye.
Alderman Win.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Holmes.
Aye.
Alderman Tindham.
Aye.
Alderman Grover.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
No.
Alderman Burris.
Aye.
The motion passes eight to one. The portion of the green building ordinance is passed. Alderman Rainey.
Can you state very clearly what the role of this committee, if it still exists, is going to be?
The role of the committee will be to rewrite Section Three, and the committee is free to make any recommendations that they want to, to the council on the ordinance.
And are you giving them a time certain to come back, or can they just fritter away through it? I'm just.
I would not wish upon anyone frittering.
But don't, I mean, I just was being, I was just being silly. Can we, can we give them a time? I'm very concerned that we do give them a time so that this is resolved.
The time that, that had been stated was December first. Are you suggesting that that's too long?
Well, there's no meeting on December, the 14th is the minute.
Well, yeah, but if they had a report, then it could get into an agenda.
Exactly.
And be presented to the council.
On the 14th.
At the first meeting in December. That's why I picked December first was so that there would be time for the city staff to get it into the packets. All right, that concludes, next is, concludes Human Services, and next is Call of the Ward. Alderman Fisk.
No report.
Alderman Jean-Petiste.
Yes, Madam Mayor. In light of the fact that we have removed the Peddlers Agenda, I mean, ordinance from the council's agenda, I thought it was a wise move, Mr. City Manager, but let me, let me caution that part of what is being asked for is to give the Evanston Police Department and Northwestern an opportunity to justify whether or not they need this Peddlers Ordinance, and I'm hoping that we're not going on a witch hunt, trying to harass folks who are trying to make a living just to establish the data to justify coming back with a vengeance. So, City Manager, since you took that initiative and since our police department is under your direction, I'm asking you to issue that concern. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Alderman Win.
No report, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Alderman Wilson.
Just like to remind everyone, pedestrian and cycling safety remains a bit of concern in, probably throughout the city, but of particular note in my ward. So just remind everyone, if you're in a vehicle, be sure that you're particularly attentive to kids walking to school, pedestrians and cyclists, and, and alert to those people that are out on the streets. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Holmes.
No report.
Thank you. Alderman Tindham.
No report, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Alderman Grover.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. First, I want to extend a hearty thank you to Alderman Holmes for allowing me to ride shotgun with her on a tour of the Fifth Ward last week, our Fifth Ward, and for sharing her insights about the variety and the challenges and the assets in our Fifth Ward. So thank you from me and from my intern, Christian Sorensen, for the opportunity to spend time with you in Fifth Ward neighborhoods, and I look forward to the prospect of a joint ward meeting as well. This weekend brings Halloween, and our sidewalks will be filled with pedestrians and trick-or-treaters between four and seven. Please take care, watch for trick-or-treaters, and especially in North Evanston where our sidewalks will be filled as well with Northwestern and Penn State fans because Halloween coincides with the Northwestern-Penn State football game. So please be especially mindful of additional pedestrians in traffic. Let's rise to the occasion and look out for each other on Halloween on Saturday. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Alderman Grover. Alderman Rainey.
My, you're so adventurous, Alderman Grover. I'm going to invite you, now that you've had some practice, down to the Eighth Ward. I want to make sure, as we're giving City Manager direction, that the transparency, and this seems to become the new word around here, of the Green Building Committee is as see-through as humanly possible, and that Aldermen also get notice of their meetings, but especially that those people that we've just appointed to the committee get notice of the meeting, so that everybody will be on the same page and will be able to bring forward at least amendments to this thing that we've passed tonight that will be logical and will be meaningful and that will be workable. You know, the theory is wonderful, but the reality is frequently a different thing. So hopefully with people who actually do this kind of work involved in, in working on what is left of the, of the ordinance, I think it might produce a really nice ordinance. So I just hope that we all know when they're going to be meeting and that our staff encourages them to meet several times at least. Please. Okay, thank you. Oh, by the way, in terms of Halloween in my ward, I wrote a letter to every single business in my ward asking them not to sell eggs to minors for two weeks before and after Halloween, and they seem to be, oh, jeez. That's it.
That's it, no eggs.
Thank you, Alderman Rainey. Alderman Burris.
Hi, thank you, Mayor Tisdale. There's a Ninth Ward Town Hall meeting, November 19th. I also encourage Ninth Ward residents to visit the new Ninth Ward Message Board on the EvanstonNinthWard.org website. There's some ongoing dialogue, and I would like more dialogue on there and to hear from you. If you want anything posted on the website, let me know, and we're also doing a monthly electronic newsletter, so in the beginning of November, you'll be getting your November newsletter. We sent out one in October, so we're trying to do one the first or second week of every month. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, before you adjourn.
I've got a motion to.
I just wanted to indicate that I'm going to be the lead staff on the Green Building Ordinance Committee, assisted by Mr. Lyons and Ms. Collopi, so we will get that information now. We'll start polling for dates tomorrow.
Thank you. I believe Mr. Wilson, Alderman Wilson's light should be on, but I'm calling on him anyway.
I move that the City Council convene into executive session to discuss matters of collective bargaining, real estate litigation, and minutes pursuant to five Illinois compiled statutes, 120/2, subsection C2, 5, 11, and 21. statutes, one-twenty slash two, subsection C two, five, eleven, and twenty-one.
Could we have a roll call?
Alderman Jip, Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman John Baptiste. Alderman Wynn. Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Holmes.
Aye.
Alderman Tindham.
Aye.
Alderman Grover.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman Burris. Nine to zero.
The motion passes. Congratulations, Alderman Fisk, you've now joined the group.
Thank you.